Welcome, everyone. Before we start the meeting, I will call on Councilman Rick Mahalovich for the prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. And be thankful for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and guests visiting our city, and to the staff and public safety personnel who have the direct responsibility in this function of city government. Let us pray for continued guidance in our deliberations and decisions, welcoming to the public open minds to new ideas, and conviction for improving the health, safety, and welfare of the City of Jefferson. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call to order the Monday, May 6, 2019 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Hussey.
Here.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Present.
Prather.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Pre-
Wiseman.
Present.
Thank you. Item three, is there a motion for adoption of the agenda? We think she's here. I don't know. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. And also, I recognize, we have some scouts with us this evening in the back, so we always enjoy when we have scouts here, and we'd love to invite you up to the podium if you'd like to say your name, and what school you're all from, and if you're working on a certain badge, let us know. Welcome.
My name is Gabe Heckel. I'm a part of Troop Eight.
Welcome. What school?
Thomas Jefferson Middle School.
Great. Glad to have you here. And are you all working on a badge together? Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
My name's Logan Mears. I go to Trinity Lutheran, and I'm working on communications also.
Great. Welcome.
Tyler Mears. I go to Trinity, and I'm working on communications, too.
Great.
Adam Johnson. Trinity Lutheran, communications.
Great. Well, we're so happy to have you all here, so welcome to the City Council Meeting. Thank you. And before we do our miscellaneous agenda items this evening, there is one thing that, with a heavy heart, we have to announce this evening, is many of you know the sweet Margaret Romf, who was really an inspiration here in our community, and she was really an amazing young woman, and she passed away, and her family told us that Margaret's favorite color is purple. So you'll see that many of us this evening have purple on in order to celebrate Margaret's life, or we have the purple flowers on these purple carnations. And I know Margaret went to Jefferson City High School. She really loved cheerleading. She was quite an inspiration. I know the lives that she's really had an influence on are really, really appreciative of her strong spirit, and our hearts and prayers are with her family tonight. So we just wanted to take a moment and celebrate her memory, and her family said this evening that they are using the hashtag "I Love Margaret." So in that spirit, we want to get a picture of the council, and we are going to hashtag that "I Love Margaret," and we want to share our thoughts and prayers with the family. So it's a sad occasion, but we want to use this moment to celebrate her memory. So if council would join me up front here, and all the others that have purple on this evening that would like to join us, and we want to share our thoughts with her family this evening.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I could, Margaret and my daughter was on the same cheer team, which was a traveling cheer team, which Capital City Cheer here in Jefferson City, and their color was purple. And certainly, she was a joy and a cheer. She even traveled when she could. You know,
cheerleader for all of us in her time here on earth and heaven, certainly gained a sweet
she was confined to a wheelchair. She still traveled with the team, and was part of one
angel. So thank you all. And now, we will go on to item four, miscellaneous agenda items,
or two of the shows in which we had. So certainly, she was a joy. We're going to miss her. Rest in peace, sweetheart.
and we actually have a very, very special guest with us this evening. We have CASA Thank you, Councilman Graham. joining us with Olive, the therapy dog. And so, we would like to welcome at this time, we have several volunteer board members. I see Ms. Jane Dunkman, a CASA board member. We have Kelly Dillon, Lisa Bax, Olive's handlers, and thank you, Jane. Oh, wonderful. We sure will.
My name's Jane Dunkman. I have actually had the privilege of sitting on the board of CASA. And we're passing some of these around. Maybe they'll share. If you need one, you can get one here in a little bit. But it is court-appointed special advocates. I always like to read that to make sure I don't say it incorrectly. But I sit on the board, actually work at Jefferson Day, and they let me volunteer my time for CASA. You could volunteer your time, too, and you're about to find out a little bit more. Kelly Dillon, she is actually an advocate, and Lisa Bax is actually the owner caregiver of Olive. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly for a minute, and then she's going to turn it over to Olive.
I know you're probably more interested in Olive, but-
No, welcome. And if you want to speak in the mic, because this is being streamed, and that way, our listeners can hear you, too.
Okay. So I'm Kelly Dillon, and I'm a CASA advocate, and I've been a CASA advocate for about three years. And so, in a short story form, what that entails is I am assigned a child from your community that I advocate for, and this child, in my instances, the child's been removed from the home for reasons of abuse or neglect. I raised six children of my own, and they gave me three teenagers right out of the gate. So I'm not sure what that said, but, you know, these are great kids, and I became a part of their team that advocated for services. One of these children I still advocate for, she was removed from her home. Parents' rights were terminated, and I was assigned to advocate for her right out of the gate. And we appear in court for them, and we speak on their behalf. We also appear in family support team meetings every month, where we communicate with parents, foster parents, GALs, caseworkers, and other team members to see to the needs of these children. I think the most important thing that I can say to all of you is that we need to get the word out about CASA. Our page currently has on Facebook 613 followers, and in a city of this size, I think that we could really do a lot better getting the word out. These are kids from our community that are going to raise their kids in our community, and we need to provide a service to them. So before I became a CASA volunteer, I was actually a police personnel board volunteer. So Chief would probably be disappointed if I didn't add a couple more things. So I'm in front of you, and what can you do for CASA? There's a couple of things that you guys could really do for CASA, and that is, these kids could use passes to the city parks for recreation. That would be a huge help. A lot of them also don't have transportation to get to even visits. CASAs can't provide transportation, but the city bus could. So these are the things that the city could do for our CASA kids. So if you know of volunteers, we can use those, but we could also use your support. And now, I will introduce Olive, the star of the show.
And Lisa will tell you a little bit about how she came about to have Olive, her training and-
Well, good evening, and thank you, Mayor Turgeon, and all of you all for this opportunity this evening to speak. A short story is Olive came by me pleading and begging to a gentleman who is a host and trainer of the Emmy Award CBS show Lucky Dog. And after extensive training, she has also rescued, she rescued, or he rescued Olive in the streets in California, and was trained, extensive training, pulled, tested with children, to the extent of, you know, you can't do anything to upset this dog. She's just this happy and fine. So she came to Jeff City to me in 2016, and has been advocating in the courtroom and in the courthouse for these CASA children. So Dillon, or Kelly Dillon specifically said she serves one child. Olive serves all of them that we encounter. And the best thing that I can just say on Olive and I's behalf in CASA is please think of us, and think of these children that play in our community, right here in our own backyards. They have been faulted by no fault of their own, but by some person who was supposed to care for them. And it is important that we advocate and be their voice, so they can get reunification at home, or find another temporary home to grow and play. Thank you, guys, very much.
Well, thank you all for being here, and we especially want to thank Olive for taking her time this evening to be with us here at Council Chambers. And does council have any questions at this time? I would like to say I do have, thanks to you, my own little personal Olive, so we will make sure Olive has a home in the mayor's office. So very, very excited to have this little Olive. And we will do our part to get the word out as well, now that we know a little more about it. It's a wonderful program, so thank you all for being here to share tonight. So if you'd like to come forward, we'd love to get a picture with Olive. And I know you also have Mr. Lookere. You're welcome to come up, too, if you want to get in our picture, and we'll have council come up here and-
Okay, one more picture.
And definitely get, definitely get a picture. to keep her here tonight. What a sweet dog. Well, thank you. I can see that she's really inspired a lot of children, so thank you all.
Yes.
Okay, we'll give her back.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Come back anytime.
All right. Thank you.
So did we just elect Olive to something while I was over there?
First ward.
Oh, first ward. We have a spot right here. Thank you. That is great. All right. Item B, we have an announcement for the Springfield Cardinals Coal County Day at the Ballpark. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kimna.
Yeah, so mark your calendars, Saturday, June 15, Coal County Day at the Ballpark. I know Sam Bushman coordinated this a few years ago, along with Central Travel, to take a group of people down to see a Springfield Cardinals game. So this is going to happen on June 15. $60 per person, if you want to ride the bus, game tickets and free tailgate if you want to go down by yourself. $20 will get you a game ticket and hang out at the tailgate. Again, Central Travel has coordinated this, so if you are interested, tickets are available at Central Travel at (573) 634-1317, and a portion of the tickets are going to pro benefit the United Way of Central Missouri.
Thank you, Councilman Kimna. It's a great United Way benefit. And then, item C, it is time again for the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. I think Councilman-
Yeah.
-Kimna's going to tell us about that.
So May 31, it's a Friday. I know for years, they've been doing the Mayor's Cup Tournament. So it's a two-person scramble at Oak Hills Golf Center. It's $100 per person, 200 per team, so a two-person team that will get paired up with two other people. So if you're interested in playing in the tournament, you can call John Landmore, and I have a number for that. It's (690) 1915, and the proceeds for that will benefit the Kiwanis Club.
Thank you. It is the 13th annual, so it's going to be the Mayor's Lucky Cup Golf Tournament. And I will say, I've heard from former Mayor John Landmore that the Fire Department has put some team members up, so we sincerely thank the Fire Department. So the challenge has been made to the Police Department to challenge that and to match that challenge. So I think we have a few of you in the room this evening, so we might see if we can make that challenge happen.
Lunch is at noon, and tea off is at 1:00.
Thank you. And really, it goes out to all city departments. I know we've had others, I know have been there in the past, and we appreciate it, council members and members of the public. So it's certainly open to everyone. It's a great benefit for Kiwanis. So thank you, John Landmore, for continuing that tradition. Item five, we have a public hearing this evening to authorize transit route changes, and I will call on Mrs. Donaldson.
2019-01, an ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri endorsing adjustments to Jeff tran routes.
Mr. Maymore will give us an update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I suspect most of you hope that I'll be as succinct as Olive was in my remarks, so I'm going to give it my best shot. Back in December, we recently reconfigured our routes. We've heard from some of our users, some of our transit riders, and they have asked us to make some adjustments to those routes. What you have in front of you this evening is indeed those types of adjustments that they've asked for. Would you mind putting it up on the screen, if you would, please? It's also in your packets. Let's start off with the black route. Don't see anything on the screen yet. The screen went blank. Okay. In your packets are the maps for the routes. The first item, we'll start with Capital Mall, black route. That one, we're changing where we pick folks up in Capital Mall, at the Capital Mall area right now. When, back in December, we changed it from in front of, in front of a restaurant near the Capital Mall to the old Sears Wing to try and move away from some traffic. Our users have told us that's inconvenient for them, and they would like us to be in front of the new food court that's recently been relocated, so that is reflected in this proposal. Also, our friends over at the county, at the county health department, had asked us to figure out a way to provide more safe access to riders. That is a place that's used substantially by transit and transit folks, and we wanted to get them from having to cross Truman Boulevard, which is a hazardous type of activity. So instead of that, now we'll be coming up behind, on Scott Station, coming up behind the facility on, to North 10 Mile, and then finally, down Constitution, where that'll prevent folks from having to cross Truman Boulevard. We think it's much more safe. These are small changes, actually, as I mentioned earlier, but they do affect more than five people, so the public hearing process is necessary. With the blue route, the blue and orange routes are very much connected. I'm going to kind of tackle those both at the same time. And those routes, we had switched Missouri Boulevard and Southwest in order to accommodate service to the new St. Mary's Hospital. And when we did that, we were a little afraid that there wouldn't be enough time, based upon our tests. We were concerned there wouldn't be enough time for the routes to make it around, so we switched Southwest Boulevard and Missouri Boulevard, in terms of St. Mary's Boulevard and Missouri Boulevard. So as they go on, what this proposal does is it switches it back to the way it was previously. We thought that our riders would like to have more options and more connectivity. Turns out, they prefer the more direct route. So we try to listen to our customers when they tell us where we've made an error, or where we could bring things back to where it would work better for them. So that's an accommodation for both the orange route, which is Missouri Boulevard, as well as the blue route, which is Southwest. There have been very few communications regarding public comments, although we have had ads in the paper, as well as an event on Facebook, as well as Twitter. So we've had a few comments which are included in your packet. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Maymore? Okay, thank you. Well, this time, I'll open the public hearing portion, and we'll ask that if anyone is here to speak on Bill 2019-001, they're welcome to come forward and speak on the bill. Do we have anyone here this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 2019-001. Is there any council discussion or deliberation? All right, seeing none, we will take up 2019-001. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes. Item six, we have appointments by the mayor. We have our list of council liaison appointments, appointments to our city boards and commissions. Is there a motion to approve the slate?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we appreciate all the council members. I know we have a lot of committees and meetings, and we appreciate all the time they put in. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. At this time, we would like to invite Mr. Gus Wagner and some others this evening from Phillips 66 Pipeline Project to give us an update. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing us on your agenda today. We very much appreciate it. My name is Mike Cod. I'm a real estate services agent with Phillips 66 Company, and here with me is Melissa Erker. She's our public information officer, along with Gus Wagner with Arch Media, who's assisting us with stakeholder communications. We're here today to provide you with a overview of an upcoming project we have through Coal County. A little background, as you may know, Phillips 66, we're committed to safe, efficient, and reliable operations with a focus on environmental stewardship. We operate pipelines and a terminal in Jefferson City, from which we supply our customers with motor fuels, propane, and butane. We currently employ approximately 20 folks in the Jefferson City area. This upcoming project is approximately 30 miles long. It runs through your community to the south of the city. We've been talking directly with the stakeholders and residents along the pipeline route, and will continue to do so. Our goal is to minimize the disruption to the community and to the environment, and so we'll continue to talk with the community members and with our stakeholders to make sure we do that. We also feel it's important to obviously inform the community leaders like yourselves of the upcoming project, so if your stakeholders and constituents have any questions, we can help you direct them to some channels of communication that we've set up. We're going to be replacing this pipeline, a 30-mile segment of the pipeline. The current pipeline's in fine shape. We maintain it and operate it under DOT standards. We're proactively replacing this segment with a thicker pipeline, because we feel as Phillips 66, it's best to exceed the industry standards. This work will take place between the Osage River and just south of California and Missouri, and we plan to start construction later this month. Construction will occur during the workday hours, or the daylight hours, between Monday and Saturday, and should last approximately four to six months. During this, during this time, we'll employ about 250 folks will be moving into the region to complete the project on our behalf. And we're going to be using some special methods to minimize the impact to the community and the environment. We're going to be boring or using horizontal directional drills to go underwaterways and roads and through more residential areas. And we'll have a website that Arch Media has helped us put together that we've disseminated on the handouts that you can supply to your constituents if they have any questions. Do you guys have any questions for us at this time?
Thank you. Is there any questions of council? Okay. Well, we appreciate you being here and keeping us informed and being proactive about that, and so that we have the tools that we need. If we get questions, we'll know who to direct them to, and thank you for-
Do you have another copy of the-
Sure.
That's fine. Sure. All right. We'll make sure we have that included in our minutes and information for people to access that information. So, Councilman Graham?
Are you guys located off of Idlewood?
Correct. That's where our terminal is.
So the terminal's located at? Okay. That's the fourth ward, yeah.
Councilman Hussey?
So just for clarity's sake, I mean, you've communicated with the property owners that are impacted.
Correct.
And so, if anybody comes into contact with us for more information, or to direct them to you is the best course of action, correct?
Right. To date, we've sent five different notification letters throughout the process to let them know what stage we're in, from surveying to construction staking to environmental surveys. And I have three right-of-way contractors working underneath me that we meet with all the landowners individually to address any of their concerns.
And I think we learn a lot of times, as I'm sure you do, that everybody ignores that, and then the crew shows up to do the work, and they say, "I haven't heard anything about this." So when that moment comes, we'll-
Absolutely.
-communicate there. Thank you.
That will be helpful. And while you're here this evening, we have, if you need to be coordinating with any city departments, I know you already work closely with police and fire, and I would assume with Public Works as well.
Maybe just generally, the pipeline goes, this is the one that goes past the East Walmart.
Correct.
Close to it. Kind of follows that path. If you're in the area, you might see the wide open spaces, but it goes by the golf course or through the golf course area, and back over to the, I guess I'd call it the substation. That's kind of generally in the city where we're talking about.
Correct.
Just so they get an idea.
So we've been working with MoDOT and with the city, and Coal and Monatah Counties for all of our necessary permits to work in the right-of-way or to cross roads.
Great. Well, thank you for working with city staff and departments, and for informing the council and keeping, getting the word out, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. All right. Has Mr. Les Martin, Officer Martin arrived yet? Okay. All right. Item eight, we have announcements by mayor, council, and staff. And we'll remind everyone that our committee meeting schedule and agendas are listed on JeffersonCityMo.gov. Are there any announcements from our four standing committees this evening? All right. And I'll say a few of my announcements. I'd like to announce that this is the Public Service Appreciation Week, so we have a scheduled events this week. Today was Donut Day, and I did take part in that, which was great. Tuesday, tomorrow, is Field Day, and there's a city hall. They'll be having some lunch and some activities. Of course, Wednesday is Truman's birthday, so the city will be closed. The city and state have a holiday on Wednesday for Truman's birthday. Thursday is a Fun Raffle Day. Friday is a Lunch Day at McClung Park. We have our annual Public Service Employee Appreciation Lunch that day. So we want to just take a moment and show how much we do appreciate each and every one of our employees at the city and what they do for public service. So thank you for that. And a couple other announcements. We did hold the second annual Mayor's Bike Ride yesterday. That was part of the Porch Fest activities, and I stayed upright the whole time. I was so happy, but I enjoyed it. We also had, Mrs. Miller was part of our team that rode around, and we really had a beautiful day to ride around the downtown. But we use the spin bikes, and I would encourage-
All right. Has Mr. Les Martin, Officer Martin arrived yet? Okay. All right. Item eight, we have announcements by mayor, council, and staff. And we'll remind everyone that our committee meeting schedule and agendas are listed on JeffersonCityMo.gov. Are there any announcements from our four standing committees this evening? All right, and I'll say a few of my announcements. I'd like to announce that this is the Public Service Appreciation Week, so we have a scheduled events this week. Today was Donut Day, and I did take part in that, which was great. Tuesday, tomorrow, is Field Day, and there's a city hall, they'll be having some lunch and some activities. Of course, Wednesday is Truman's Birthday, so the city will be closed. The city and state have a holiday on Wednesday for Truman's Birthday. Thursday is a fun raffle day. Friday is a lunch day at McClung Park. We have our annual Public Service Employee Appreciation Lunch that day. So, we want to just take a moment and show how much we do appreciate each and every one of our employees at the city and what they do for public service. So, thank you for that. And a couple other announcements. We did hold the second annual mayor's bike ride yesterday. That was part of the Porch Fest activities, and I stayed upright the whole time. I was so happy, but I enjoyed it. We also had, Mrs. Miller was part of our team that rode around, and we really had a beautiful day to ride around the downtown. But we use the spin bikes, and I would encourage people, it is so easy to get a spin bike and just go around the block or go around town, and that's what I used, and it was great. And then, I'll also turn it over to Councilman Ken Hussey to talk a little bit about Porch Fest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so we had Porch Fest for the second year in a row on Capitol Avenue. I think initial estimates say we might have had 3,000 people come through there at some point throughout the day. Special thanks to Councilman Kemna and Councilwoman Ward for volunteering for the entirety of the day, and to Councilman Hensley for being a musician on part of the entertainment, one of the porches there, and I think 2,900 of those 3,000 were there to watch him, I suspect.
Well, I'd say, I'd say, at least, right? But, big thanks to Ken and the entire team who worked on putting that together, just a fantastic event.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Cultural Arts Commission, Parks Department, Quentin Rice, Holly Stitt with Avenue HQ, and I can't think of Holly's specific business name, who helped pull this together. Eleven porches, 30-plus artists, eight food trucks, and just a good sense of community and art on those blocks, and a lot of people getting on the ground to see those properties and see the restoration, but also see what work still needs to be done. So, more to come about fall Porch Fest, with the strong possibility it might move to the third ward, so, more to come.
Well, that is wonderful, and in fact, we even had the governor came to Porch Fest, along with his wife, the first lady, and they had some family members in town visiting, and they actually strolled the entire length of Porch Fest, which was just wonderful. It's a great event. And my last announcement is that I did attend the law enforcement memorial service at the Capitol, which was on Saturday morning, and there were families from all around the state of Missouri, and it was really nice to have a moment to reflect and respect and realize the importance of those that have sacrificed and those who continue to serve in our law enforcement field, and we really appreciate them. Item B, I have an announcement for, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, okay. I'll go through a couple of these. The Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Moment for this meeting is going to be to follow the bicentennial on Twitter. So, I never say, "Get your phones out," but right now, I'll say, "Get your phones out, go on Twitter, @Missouri2021," and follow them for updates on social media. So, I hope that you're following the bicentennial on Twitter, and so we can get updates on what's going on for that. And item C, we have Heritage Month, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to invite everybody to come out and discover the heritage of Jefferson City at the Heritage Day Celebration. They'll be in this room on Wednesday, the 15th of this month, so a little bit more than a week away. We will be, it's sponsored by the Historic City of Jefferson and Historic Preservation Commission. They will be awarding the Gregory Stocker Distinguished Service Award, the Landmark Designation Awards, and of course, everybody's favorite is the art contest from the kids. So, I'd like to invite everybody to come out to that. The evening before, we are working on a historic preservation plan with Heritage Strategies, a consultant, and they will be having a public involvement event as part of the Historic Preservation Commission meeting. I believe it starts at 6:00 PM, and it also will be in the council chamber, so that is May 14th at 6:00 PM. We'd like to get your feedback on what we're doing so far, and find out what we're doing with Historic Preservation to help guide us down the road in the future for what we do.
Great. Thank you for that information. And I believe Councilman Kemna will give us an update on community park.
Yes, so, weather committee, tomorrow, 4:00. They'll be at Groundbreak, they're in Miami, for community park. And then, I'll probably just kind of throw in, I don't know, tomorrow night, if we can go over to the third night light, so, here's a little small night preview.
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Yeah.
Or not, sorry, Thursday night would be...
Yeah. Tomorrow's community park, Tuesday, but Thursday would be, yeah.
And I know they said the Shelby Fest, and I think it's next week, they're going to pull that out.
That's right.
Pull that out.
Yes. Great. Yeah, there were a lot of people here for Shelby Fest, they had a great day for that as well, lots of visitors. All right, and then, we have the Patriotic Roundabout. I think Councilman Mahalovich is going to give us an update.
Yeah, thank you. I've been asked by Hank Stropin to challenge the council to get him over the last hump on donations to the Patriotic Roundabouts, and Hank has been a real champion for this, and he's overcome several hurdles in a high hill, and being an ex-general, hills are nothing for him to conquer, so it's been a big event, I mean, for him to have created those, been the genesis for it, and been the driving force for those roundabouts. If you haven't been to the east side, please do that, and drive by them, because they are amazing. That'll make our, when it's done, there'll be four of our roundabouts that have taken some sort of beautification, and maybe that challenges other sides of the community to adopt these roundabouts. But the Eastside Business Association and Legion Post 5 are accepting donations for the roundabout, encourage people to give what they can. And with that, I don't know if Councilman Graham has any?
Hank and I were together this afternoon, and I think he said it was $10,000 short. So, if each council member can give $1,000, we can get over the hump today, so. And the Eagle is up in one of the roundabouts. As Hank and I was driving around town today, one of the Eagles is up, so it looks very nice. So, they're starting to work on the other roundabout that's closest to the Walmart side, so. But seriously, we do need donations, so if you can, please give.
I don't know if you guys have contact information?
American Eagle, American Legion?
Legion Post 5, and Eastside Business Association, hang on, if you want to track the doctor.
Right.
Great, thank you.
But $10,000 short, we can get there.
All right, let's make that happen.
We got pledged for Rick.
All right.
Cool, Rick kicks it off.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, thank you, Councilman Prather. Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to invite Amy Rogers. She's going to give us an announcement this evening. There is a program that our Parks and Rec is working on, and Amy is helping to bring some awareness and hopefully some fundraising to that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and the council members. I'm with Showdown Theater Camps here in Jefferson City. We are cosponsored by Parks and Rec, and we're very thankful for them to cosponsor us. This summer, we have a special camp starting right after the first three theater camps. It'll be our film camp, and we are bringing in an LA director to shoot this film and to teach the kids how to do films on their phones, or any kind of device that they may have. And he's actually going to come into LA, it's Stephen Lamorte, and he will be actually making a full-length feature film that will have its red carpet premiere here in Jefferson City within the next year, hopefully next spring if he gets it all done. We are raising donations. We have five different donation levels, and we have a Facebook page, we have an Instagram page, we don't have Twitter yet, but we're getting there. We can, you can also find more information about the camps and how to enroll kids in the camps on the Parks and Rec page. And if you need any kind of information, we can get with Angie Tobin, who is the one that is our connection through Parks and Rec. Or you can, I can give anybody an email, I can get that to the council, and if there's any questions, just email me. I know the mayor has my email. But are there any questions about the camps or about the film?
Any council questions? Okay. Well, we appreciate you taking the time to inform us, and I know you've sent an email with the information, so we'll make sure that that's part of the minutes also, in case anybody would like that, or they can contact you or Parks and Rec.
Yes, and if anybody wants to, we're also collecting donations, just like the street projects for the roundabouts. We're collecting donations because these films don't make themselves. He has a crew coming in, and we're trying to get some funding for that, so we are willing to accept any donations as well.
Great. Well, thank you, Ms. Rogers. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. Are there any other council announcements? Okay. Item nine, Lincoln University Student Representative update, Ms. Carolyn Wanjaro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council as a whole. I would first of all like to thank all of you and the community as well for coming out and supporting the president's gala. It was a great success, had a lot of fun. They had me speak, if only you could see me shaking. Phew, it was tough, but we had a good time. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for always supporting the Blue Tigers and the Lincoln University family. And also, it's finals week, school is about to be out. It's one of those weeks you don't sleep and you survive on coffee. But also, we are having, the Lincoln University Track and Field Team, both men and women, will be heading off to Nationals in two weeks. So, cheer them on as they go out and represent us. This past weekend, they just had a track meet, and we had, and the women's team, two of the ladies came out as, took the first place, so, we're doing something. Thank you.
Well, that is great news, and good luck with finals. And I will say, you did a fantastic job. You did an amazing job at the gala, getting up there on stage and telling your amazing story. I know several of us were there that evening, and just so very proud of you, and you represent the students so very well, so, thank you. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. So, we don't have any signed up this evening for that. Item 11, consent agendas, there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced 2019-06.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing the name of West Miller Street Rear to Courtney Way.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do have a PowerPoint up here, thank you very much. This is a staff-initiated renaming of a city street, West Miller Street Rear to Courtney Way. The reason for it is, we had a citizen come and convey their concerns about not getting their mail delivered, or 911 service, or whatever. There's a handful of neighbors in that area. So, we took the name Courtney Way from, that used to be the name of the old shoe factory in the vicinity, so we tried to tag it to a place name of significance in the past to the city. Basically, the fiscal impact would pertain to signage, putting signs up. Public Works would put two or three signs up, I don't know, it'd be about $100 apiece. We had one comment in the positive from one of the property owners, and it passed Planning and Zoning unanimously, eight to zero, with the recommendation to approve. We would have a public hearing on May 20th, and I did all this without showing you where it is. It's sort of an awkward-shaped street, and there's only, I think, three or four actual houses addressed off of it there. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Okay, thank you. 2019-07.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana facilities.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you all recall, back in November, there was a ballot issued to change the state constitution permitting recreational, excuse me, slip of the tongue. Not recreational, no, no, no. Medical marijuana facilities in the state of Missouri. I can see the headline now. So, the Department of Health and Senior Services, they're the ones charged with rulemaking. And as part of that, there's, they've defined four types of facilities. Cultivation facility was where they would grow the medical marijuana. Testing facility, that's where they would test the potency and other issues with the product. Infused products manufacturing, that's where they would do extraction of the oils, create waxes, and other things I'm not really familiar with. And then, the fourth is a dispensary. At this point, what we're doing is, we decided as staff to go ahead and break it up into two phases and address the retail of the dispensary facility separately. We will bring that, be bringing that case to the Planning and Zoning Commission next month. So, we're just looking at the cultivation, testing, and the manufacturing process. The state statutes, excuse me, the rules are pretty specific of what we can and can't do. We can manage the time, place, and manner of these facilities. There's a couple of things we can't do. There's a distance requirement from these facilities to daycares, churches, secondary and elementary, secondary and elementary school locations. We cannot extend the distance past 1,000 feet from those locations, from these facilities as the foot travel, not as an equidient distance, or as a crow flies, but actually as someone would navigate on foot from one of these facilities to one of those other areas of interest, daycare, schools, and whatnot. So, with that, we have gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The, we had public comment, we had a one-person comment that basically had to do with, do not lessen the rules or guidelines that you have in place. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved putting these facilities in general industrial, which is M1, or, excuse me, M2, or light industrial, which is M1. So, there are certain areas of the city that might be able to accommodate these with those being permitted uses. There's a map up there. This map, I'd like to note, in purple are the areas that are zoned M1 and M2. Those gray areas are buffers out of the 1,000 feet from the property line of daycare, schools, and churches. I'd like to note that that is as a crow flies, not as someone would walk. We don't have the databases to actually navigate what the distance would be to walk, but that gives you a general idea, general representation of where those facilities would be permitted when this zoning moves forward. With that, I will finally look at my notes. It closely mirrors the state, the rules, and the fiscal impact on the actual zoning action would be none. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or if they're on the legal side, Mr. Moulman's prepared to do so too.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the medical marijuana facilities? Councilman Mahalovich?
There's been complaints by some communities that have experienced marijuana growth, that during some part of the process, it has a very distinct and foul odor. And I, looking at that map, it appears that, you know, some of that's within the city, you know, populated area of the city. To me, if it's going to be in M1, M2, it almost needs to be in an area, M1, M2, where it's not as heavily populated, because I can, I think there's plenty of articles out there about it, the odor that's produced. The second and third question I have has to do with the second phase, so it, since you're only introducing the first phase, I'll just leave my comments to that.
Would you like me to respond to the odor issue? You are correct, I've also seen those articles and newscasts. My understanding on the cultivation facilities where they grow it, they get a permit for 30,000 square feet at a time, and then they'd also have to have other room inside the building. So, one permit, the building's probably going to be very large, and would probably not fit into many of the other areas, not that there aren't buildings, but I would imagine if someone's going to make this investment, they're probably going to be looking at a very large footprint for security and other things that they would have to do. I would imagine, based on what I've been reading and looking at, these are high-tech facilities, they'll probably be in new facilities, they'll probably be looking for open ground that has all the infrastructure, water, roads, things like that. It's pretty high-tech. My take on it is, it would probably be more in the areas that have open land already, ready to be developed. The odor, Mr. Moulman might be able to respond whether that would actually violate the noxious odor laws, and there might be some enforcement on that way, but other than that, I'm not sure how we would address the odor issue.
Yeah, so, there's kind of general odor nuisance requirements, but in all respect to planning staff, this is actually more than two steps. There's also going to be some additional business licensing and criminal code modifications to go along with this. One of the things that many cities are looking at when doing the business licensing as opposed to the zoning restrictions, is to have odor control requirements as part of a business license. And so, if that is an item that council is interested in, that's something that staff level, we can take a look at and give proposals on how to help control odor controls, and we can make some affirmative requirements that they not impinge on the neighborhood with odors, to the extent that we can. Substantially, we'll take a look at successful outcomes in other cities and see... And substantially, we'll take a look at successful outcomes in other cities and see, you know, this isn't the first time this has happened anywhere, so we'll be borrowing heavily from our friends and neighbors and fellow municipalities. But that'll definitely be something that we're looking for as part of the business licensing regulations.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, 2019-8.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Highland Village, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Highland Village subdivision is also the property where Old St. Mary's used to sit. As you are aware, it's on the intersection of Highway 50, 63 and 54. The subdivision plat has approximately seven lots. One of those is going to be for a private road that connects from Bolivar to where the ramps are to get on eastbound 54 and off of 54. That's not going to be a public street, that's going to be a private drive. Two of the lots already have buildings, the Red Brick Building you're familiar with on the south side, and then also the parking garage that is next to Bolivar up on the northeast side. The other lots, the other four lots will be developed. There is a board of adjustment case coming up next Tuesday for a minor setback variance and another issue with the design, but we do not foresee any concerns with that. And with that, we've not received any public comment. The fiscal impact is only the permit fee, the application fee that was given to the city for $385. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. This would be a public hearing issue.
Any questions? All right, thank you. 2019-9.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending city code, Chapter 8, Buildings and Building Regulations by replacing portions of Section 8-3, amendments to the National Electrical Code 2014, Section 8-5, amendments to the 2015 International Plumbing Code, and Appendix Y, schedule of administrative fees, permits, licenses and other charges.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the past few years, there's been some things that we want to clarify and improve the licensing for plumbing and electrical contractors. One change, and let me, let me back up a second. This request came through the licensing boards for the plumbers and electricians themselves, then through city staff, so I just want to put that in there, that it was initiated by them, they've noticed some issues that need to be addressed. For both of the trades, we're going to require proof of insurance for $500,000 general liability and make sure they also have state-required workman's compensation. Right now, we have a permanent licensing program and it's hard to keep track. If someone gets a permanent license when they're no longer doing the work or anything like that, that's why we're going through this three-year term. We're going to offset it so they're not on the same three years. We're probably going to start with electrical licensing. There's more changes to the section on the plumbing code. We've come across instances where it's necessary to clarify what work is actually to be done by a licensed plumber and what can be done perhaps by an excavator putting in stormwater facilities or things like that. There's been some issues out in the field. And then we also want to make sure that, to be, to get your master electrician, excuse me, master's plumber license, that you have to provide proof that you have a journeyman's license. And then with that, the Appendix Y code changes would just be for basically setting that fee, that three-year fee. We did a lot of outreach, we directly corresponded with 77 licensed electrical contractors for the city, 46 plumbing contractors, and then we have a building regulations stakeholder group of about 100 people that we also blasted email out to that. All the comments we got back, we didn't get tons of comments, but we got a handful, they were positive and supportive of this change to the licensing code for plumbers and electricians. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Great, any questions? All right, thank you. Oh, Councilman Fitzwater.
I was just going to compliment them on this process, Sonny and certainly Larry, I had the privilege of working with that board and they spent a lot of time drawing information out of that group. I think they tried to create a mechanism that was fair to all the parties. And I was impressed with the input that they had and I think the comments that they received reflect that, so just wanted to compliment them on. A process that I think takes a look at everybody, tries to set up an equitable system, but gives the city a little bit more enforcement abilities.
That's great, thank you for those comments. 2019-10.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for assistance with operating expenses for the air traffic control tower at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of November 1st, 2018 through October 31st, 2019.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this agreement, MoDOT, and basically, basically it will help the city cover its costs on the local side of operating airport tower. We previously had an agreement with the FAA to get in their tower program, so our share of that's in the 40, mid $40,000 range, but this grant would also help us with utilities and things like that, up to $50,000.
Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich.
Do you know a timeframe when the airport master plan will be finalized or close to it?
It's getting pretty close, I know, but I don't have an exact date.
It might be worthwhile to present that to the council when it's completed. I think especially the traffic control tower is in great need, so.
Yeah, once that's completed, it'll help us start applying for grants on various aspects of the airport.
Councilman Hussey.
And I think every, every time we do these contracts, throw us a little bit later than the actual start date, but.
I think this one's October, I believe, last October.
Yeah, but.
Or November.
We're okay, there's, this has not, not been an issue on our end, this is usually an issue on their end to get this done, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks. 2019-11.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Jefferson Asphalt Company in the amount of $909,116.55 for the 2019 mill and overlay project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Again, it's, this is an annual contract, our overlay contract we have every year. The Jefferson Asphalt was a low bidder and we actually had two bids this year, Higgins Asphalt, so some competition in that bid. And the list of streets was discussed at the Public Works and Planning Committee meeting and, and we have to answer any questions.
And I remember, Mr. Marash, we discussed the, but there was an update, I think, to the list from the one that was previously shared, the last Public Works meeting, I guess I would just ask if you don't mind, maybe sending that list back to the council for, I don't think it's in the packet here, but just so that we all can see the, the updates that were made, thank you.
Certainly.
Councilman Graham.
That was going to be my comment, I would like to see that list in case you need to make some recommendations for adjustment in case.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All right, thank you. Item 13, Bills Pending, we've taken up number one, we'll take up 2019-2.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to modify an agreement with the Jefferson City Firefighters Local 671, commonly known as the Work Agreement.
Chief Schofield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason this bill appears before you today is that it does modify the existing work agreement between the city and local firefighter 671. To provide a little bit of context and background, we've been meeting for a little over a year, maybe two, discussing different points of the, the potential implementation of a shift change like this. And what it essentially allows is for two 24 and a quarter hour shifts to be worked back-to-back. And most of the changes that you'll see in the document reflect three categories. One is the definition of what a shift actually is, as it pertains to the work agreement, and then also how vacation time is selected. And then finally, the effective date or the implementation timeline. So, that would take effect sometime between January 1st of 2020 and, between there and March 31st. So, we don't know that we have a specific date in which this would take effect if it were approved tonight, but we've worked through a lot of the challenges and I believe that we have a good understanding of what it might look like and the potential impacts to, to operations which are pretty minimal. We have, from the very beginning, said that our priorities are to maintain the existing level of service and to not have any negative financial impact on the city. So, I know that we do also have members of Local 671 here tonight and I believe they are prepared, as I am, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you all for being here this evening as well. Does council have any questions or comments? Councilman Mahalovich.
I was wondering if somebody could comment with regard to incentivizing or de-incentivizing the, this change in regard to our firefighters living within the area, specifically the city of Jefferson.
Yes, you will recall that a few years ago, the city did change their policy on the residency requirement. And at that time, we, we also discussed it pretty thoroughly within public safety and our determination at that time for the fire department was that that, that radius rule would maintain and be in effect. And so, we didn't change the radius rule. That is something that other departments, I would say, that have gone to this schedule have noticed, is that if they don't have a residency requirement, that a lot of their personnel do travel from very far distances, something that we did not see as a benefit. We feel that it's important for people to have a connection to this community and to be somewhat local, within reason. We understand that, you know, the, the radius, the 25-mile radius, 30-minute response time, that is 25, is that what it was? Didn't change to 30. So, just to clarify, it is 25 miles and 30 minutes response time is important, not only for a connection to the community, but also in such cases where we would need to call back personnel if we had major incidents or overtime opportunities, we want them to be available so they can come back and serve as needed. And I'm happy to let members from the local also respond to that if they would like.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. It was kind of a separate thing, we did actually discuss this as members about a year and a half ago. We had a member of the fire department that lived well outside that range and didn't have the ability to move. We put out a survey to the whole union to find out if this was something that actually people felt strongly about, and it was. We actually got overwhelming support that people enjoyed, or not necessarily enjoyed, but supported the 25-mile radius and the 30-minute response time. So, currently, I don't see that being an issue and, you know, I live in Ashland, but I shop here, I spend all my time here, so.
Thank you. Are there further questions of council or comments? Councilman Fitzwater.
I just wanted to clarify, it talks about the effective date, the termination provision is the city administrator or the fire department can terminate, so essentially council would not have any input after the first year?
And Counselor Mulman was the architect of that particular paragraph, so he may want to comment, but my understanding of it is that, that what you'd be approving tonight is for us to go to a one-year trial period. And we wanted to make sure, we wanted to spend some time in the schedule, so we actually knew we had tangible experience to draw from. And so, if there was a desire by either the city, as the city administrator has noted directly in that, that paragraph, or the membership, the local of the union, were to express concerns that warranted discontinuing it, either one would have an escape clause, is my understanding.
Yes, the, the one-year period, upon completion of the one-year period, it is a decision of the city administrator as to whether or not the 4896 continues into its kind of second That is correct, it's, it's the city administrator. Yeah, or a vote of, or a vote of the locals, so it's bilateral.
And I think Councilman Graham, or do you have a follow-up on that first?
Well, I was just going to say, if, I mean, I don't know that we'll have concerns about it, but if we had concerns, then our process would be to express them to the city administrator?
My response would be, I think from my perspective, it'd be more of an operational kind of a concern or an issue, not a policy issue that, that you all be making tonight, certainly on that one-year term, but I would certainly seek input if it gets to that point.
Councilman Graham.
Yes, Chief or someone, could you please talk to us a little bit more about how the training will be handled? I know that right now, you have certain days, you do training. How can you do the training, all the training in, in two days? Would it require overtime for you to come back a third day or, just let me know how that training will actually take place.
Chief, you want to go first or?
Sure. So, the actual number of hours doesn't change. The, the average number of hours worked per month by a fire department, shift assigned personnel is 56 hours per week. And so, the actual hours don't change, it's just the cycle of those hours. So, if you think of it, the easiest way that I describe it to people is that a third of your life is spent at the fire station, that's why we have three, three shifts and they rotate through holidays, weekends, all seasons, all days of every year. So, so any one day, there's one of those three shifts on, and that equals out to about 56 hours per week. So, the challenge for us now is to say that, from the very beginning, we, we made it very clear that we would not be reducing the number of training hours. That was a non-negotiable from the fire administration standpoint, and I believe the local as well. And so, we just have to be creative about how we schedule those a little bit, and, and we believe we have that flexibility. And it may mean that there's more training done on weekends, where traditionally that was done during the work week. It may also mean that there's more training done in creative hours, after hours, there may be more company-level training, whereas before it was departmental-level training. But we see that as something that we can address internally and, and we believe we can deliver just as many training and just as qual, higher quality of training as we do now.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Okay. Well, we appreciate all the input and working together to bring this to us. Chief.
I would just add in closing that we're going to continue to monitor this really closely and the committee that the local has put together is working with fire administration as well as senior city staff, and we've had multiple meetings leading up to this, and we'll continue to do that through this trial period.
Thank you, Chief. All right, at this time, any further deliberation? All right, roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-3.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As, as the Clerk indicated, this bill would authorize a supplemental to purchase a snow cloud truck for our street division at $75,000. The current truck was taken out of service last winter due to a rusted out frame.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, Councilman Hensley.
Thank you. On the, on the bill summary and, and other discussions that have been had on this, it seems like the main issue for, for why this is being brought now is, is that delivery time from the date of order to, to when it would actually be delivered and then how, how payment would occur is the main reason for this request at this point and not for putting it through the normal budget cycle the next time. Is that about right?
Yeah, correct. We did request it last winter, then a grant opportunity came up, so we delayed, see if we could get the grant. We did, we weren't successful, but again, it does take several months typically to order this truck in, so we would like to have it back in service by next winter.
But, I mean, my, my point was, if the truck could be purchased and you would have it in time for next winter, there'd be no reason not to put it through the normal budget process, right?
Well, the normal budget process doesn't typically conclude till like August, so we couldn't purchase.
No, that's my point.
Yes, yes, correct, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, well, if we, you know, if this passes tonight, I, I think it would make sense as we go through the ensuing budget process that's going to start here in the next couple of months, if we would just remember this particular purchase and, and keep this one in mind, even though it won't technically be within the budget for the next year, it is a purchase that, that will hit during that time. So, just to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Any other questions or deliberation? Okay, roll call, please.
Hussey.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-4.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, designating 204 East High Street as a local historic landmark.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The property owners of 204-
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-4.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, designating 204 East High Street as a local historic landmark.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The property owners of 204 East High Street have submitted their nomination for their building, the Historic Exchange Bank Building, as a local historic landmark. The application with Historic Preservation Commission, and they concurred and are making the nomination to the city council, which has the authority to designate it as a local historic landmark. If awarded this, the property owners would be presented with a plaque, which is basically the, all the fiscal impact there is, which is about $200, and we already have the plaques in stock. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? All right, Councilman Fitzwater?
I just had a comment, and just to repeat what I said last time, I'm at 100% in support of this historic designation. I just have concern because of our ongoing activities at 200 and 202 about the timing of the designation. So, I still do not support it at this time. Again, I'm 100% in support of that building, but I'd like to get everything taken care of on that corner before designated, to make sure that there's not going to be any problems with those two buildings.
Councilman Graham?
I have to concur with my colleague from the 4th Ward. I too have the same concerns that, that he just shared with us, and I would like to know, I don't know if this is the right time or not, what are we doing about 20202 East High Street? If that would have been in a residential neighborhood, that would not have gone this long, and I am very concerned about the building. What are we going to do as a city? We need to do something. It continues to sit there, and that doesn't make any sense to me. So, I, I agree with you, Councilman. I'm not supporting tonight, based on that fact.
So, maybe Mr. Sanders could give us some direction on whether that is a valid concern in designating this particular property?
Sure. As, as a quick update regarding 20204, there's three lawsuits out there. One between the owner of 200 and 204, the inverse from 204 to, excuse me, I'm sorry, I misspoke, 200 and 202. 204 is not involved in any of that. But the property owners of, of the, of the two buildings sharing the party wall are, have lawsuits against each other. And then, we also are in a lawsuit with the property owner of 202. With that being said, we have developed a scope of services that we can do demolitions on in the future. They both have been ordered demolished or repaired. With that, we're, we're getting close to the point where we will come to the city council and ask for funds that we can demolish the building. Other than, than that avenue, I do not have the authority to, to take other action. I think Ryan's department may be able to do, do something along that line.
So, for-
And, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And, and the relationship between this landmark designation and, and the status of the other adjoining buildings, I do not believe this, this, this status would impede or impair us from moving ahead and demolishing the other two buildings. My understanding, and I wish Larry was, Larry is here, he might be able to speak to, he wishes he wasn't, he might be able to speak to the soundness of the building and how the construction of 204 does not connect or is structurally supporting 202. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any more questions, or what Mr. Burkhart did.
Mr. Burkhart, anything to add to give council some assurance on that particular building?
I think there might be. 204, according to what we were able to find out, was built first. It's a standalone structure. It has concrete foundations, unlike the other 200, which has a brick foundation. It's a pretty stout building. It has concrete slabs, and the interior was built as a bank. And so, there's even a vault in, in the basement. Upon inspection, I really didn't find any type of serious deterioration of, of the masonry. And so, I suspect, I have a very good feeling that if we do take down 200 and 202, or if those buildings are taken down by hopefully their owners, or taken care of somehow, 204 will still be standing. There's a very good possibility, I'd say, I don't want to put a percentage about it, but 90% plus that, that bank or that building will not be damaged. They're going to have to do something to it because 202 has latched on to the exterior walls of 204 and, and 200. And so, 202 is totally dependent upon those buildings, and the party wall between 204 and 202 seems to be very sound. So.
Thank you. Councilman Hussey?
I don't have a question for you, Mr. Burkhart. I guess just a couple of comments.
Thanks.
I am sensitive to the concerns of my colleagues. The bill is sponsored by Councilwoman Ward, and so, you know, she's not here to take any action on it this evening to delay this. I think you find a council willing to support this, but the optics of doing it right now, when there's still issues with those other two properties, just, there's no urgency to, to do this. It doesn't trigger anything. And so, I'll make a motion to, at this point, to postpone this bill for two weeks to be taken up at the next council meeting, when Councilwoman Ward is here to speak to those concerns and guide us on that direction from there.
A second.
So, we have a motion and second to postpone the bill to the next meeting, and I'd want to ask, would that affect the, the ceremony date? Isn't it that week?
The ceremony is next Wednesday on the 15th.
Okay, so it would be best, I mean, by postponing it, then they miss the ceremony, which, so they would miss it this year. So, would you all want to reconsider that motion?
Personally, I mean, it's a ceremony. When we get to that point, if it requires an additional ceremony, I think that's fine. I think that, from where I sit, it just seems like there's enough concerns with 200-202, that process was taking place, that it just seems best to get that resolved and then come back and address this.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to postpone. Speaking on that motion, I, I would prefer, especially based on the discussion this evening from staff that have said that it's sound that we move forward with the process, and the historic designation, although ceremonial, it, you know, would, it still is, I think, an important designation, and this building that's been faced with having the, the challenges a couple doors down from it for quite a while, that the city is working through that process as diligently as the law allows us to. But certainly, they have worked very hard to make this building something very nice and beautiful renovation. And so, I wouldn't want our actions to hinder, at least even the perception of, of that, of what they're doing. And, and hearing tonight that, that it does have the, the structural integrity intact, that there is a difference between these two and the other buildings, with, that the others have a shared wall, this does not. So, it's, according to staff, we don't have any reason to, to worry about that. So, they're still doing business despite all of the, everything we have, and that building is still there. So, I would, I would ask council to vote on it this evening, so that they can participate and be part of this next week. We have a motion and second to postpone, so any further discussion on that motion? Okay, so we'll take up the motion to postpone. Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Shreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Motion passes, so we'll postpone to the next city council meeting, and maybe, depending on that outcome, have a, a different ceremony. Councilman Graham?
And, and along those same lines, I don't know, we've done so much on East Capitol to make it look beautiful, and we're doing stuff on East High Street, and we have visitors coming into our town and visiting downtown, uptown. And to drive by and see 200-202, the building's crumbling, is sad. I hope that whatever law is, is in place, that we can do something soon, because that is an eyesore. And like I said earlier, if that was in the neighborhood, that would have been taken care of a long time ago. So, I think that whatever we can do to speed that process up, need to speed that process up, because that is an eyesore, and it makes our downtown looks bad, and then people asking questions, what about the rest of the city? It's crumbling down. We want people to come downtown and visit it. But when they see that, the question's in their mind, is the rest of the building falling down too? Is this what Jefferson City's about, falling down? Let's take action, and action quick. Thank you so much, staff.
Thank you, Councilman Graham, and it might be appropriate that we have a closed session to discuss more details among council with that. Perhaps Councilor Moulman could put that on an upcoming meeting? It sounds like that would be appropriate at our next council meeting, to have a closed session. And again, lawsuits are pending, so we're somewhat limited on, on what can be said since we have lawsuits filed. Any, let's see, we've already voted on that, so 2019-5.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, designating 214 and 216 Madison Street as a local historic landmark.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 214 and 216, I think everybody's aware, is Madison's. It's a great restaurant. The property owners have taken advantage of, I believe, the commercial facade program and whatnot in the past, and have taken pride in the property. And they also have nominated their building as a, a local historic landmark, and has also been supported by the Historic Preservation Commission, and is now before you for consideration as a local historic landmark.
Thank you. Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14, there's nothing on the informal, we have no resolutions. Item 15. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics, where individuals will have three minutes to speak on any topic. And we have with us Ms. Shim, Shimmin, and I'll let you pronounce your last name, and I apologize if I said that wrong, but welcome. And if you could just state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Shimmin John. Good evening, Mayor Turgeon and the council members. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about the upcoming Fa Lüng Da Fa Day. Fa Lüng Da Fa, also known as Fa Lüng Gong, is a mind-body cultivation practice funded by Mr. Li Hongzhi in China. It is a discipline in which the principles of truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance are the foundation of the practice. The practice also includes four sets of gentle standing exercises and a sitting meditation. On May 13, 1992, Mr. Li Hongzhi introduced Fa Lüng Da Fa to the public for the first time. Fa Lüng Da Fa's effectiveness in improving health and its profound principles quickly made the practice immensely popular throughout China and then throughout the world. Through following the teachings, millions of people have regained their physical health and peace of mind. Many families on the verge of breaking up have been saved. According to a survey conducted in September 1998 by the National General Sports Administration of China, in which more than 12,000 Fa Lüng Gong practitioners responded, 98 report, 98% reported health improvements after practicing Fa Lüng Gong. Later surveys of Fa Lüng Da Fa practitioners in Taiwan, Russia, Australia, and North America produced a similar result. Especially in China, where so many people practice Fa Lüng Da Fa, national healthcare expenditures were greatly reduced. Despite the enormous physical, mental, and economic benefits that Fa Lüng Da Fa brings to practitioners, the communist regime began to regard it as a threat after a government survey estimated that 70 to 100 million people were practicing Fa Lüng Da Fa. They believed that it might draw people away from their belief in communism. In July 201999, the Chinese communist regime launched a brutal persecution of Fa Lüng Gong practitioners. For the past 20 years, false and hate inciting propaganda, arbitrary arrests, cruel torture, brainwashing, imprisonment, and even forced organ harvesting from living practitioners have been used in an attempt to eradicate the practice from China. Despite these most difficult times, Fa Lüng Gong practitioners have not given up their righteous belief. They risked all they have to kindly, peacefully, and continually tell people the truth about Fa Lüng Da Fa. Over the years, more and more people, both inside and outside of China, have learned the truth and have seen through the evil nature of the Chinese Communist Party. In 2000, May 13 was declared as World Fa Lüng Da Fa Day. On this day every year, Fa Lüng Da Fa practitioners around the world celebrate World Fa Lüng Da Fa Day in various ways, and wish Mr. Li Hongzhi, the founder of Fa Lüng Da Fa, a happy birthday. This year, May 13, 2019, marks the 27th anniversary of Fa Lüng Da Fa's public introduction and the 20th annual World Fa Lüng Da Fa Day. I would like to take this opportunity to invite my neighbors to join us in celebrating World Fa Lüng Da Fa Day, and hope that more people can learn about and benefit from the practice of Fa Lüng Da Fa. Thank you.
Thank you, Shimmin. And are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just saw we have Mr. Officer Les Martin here, and I know you were under a previous agenda item. Would you like to come forward at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
While Mr. Martin comes forward, I know that we originally had him under 7B, but he couldn't make it on time. I know under that number seven, you can get five minutes. So, I'm asking my colleagues, do you mind if Mr. Martin gets five minutes instead of three?
Okay, looks like, I think that's fine. Okay, welcome, Mr. Martin.
So, I need to make a motion.
Okay.
So, I need to make a motion.
Motion for five minutes. Mr. Martin.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, welcome, Officer Martin.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Excuse me. My name is Les Martin, and I am the team manager for Team, which is known as Bare Minimum. First of all, let me explain what, why I'm talking about Bare Minimum. It's, it's a team that's made up of Elias and J.C. kids. All three of them are sophomores. They've been in this program for nine years. Two of the three have been in the program for nine years. It's based on critical thinking, creative thinking, as well as team time management, and also the skills that they are able to bring together. So, destination imagination is the opportunity for them to express a way of doing things outside of the high school. Neither high school do support the program at this point, but we are trying to get them in. What they have to do is they have to create a skit, and I'll pass some information out to you guys shortly after. They have to build a structure that's made out of balls of wood, out of wood glue, and out of tethered fishing line. Now, the unique thing about tethered fishing line, a lot of you guys and gals may know, little kids and even maybe some high school kids will not know what that is. So, it's a lot of research, a lot of time, emphasis on them being able to figure all this stuff out. So, they made a structure this year, and they've gone, this is their third step. They went through the first phase, which was a regional, they went through state competition, and now they've been invited to go to a global competition. Global means that they're going to go against the world's best kids. The, the location this year's changed from Knoxville, Tennessee, to Kansas City, Missouri. So, we are lucky that Missouri's brought it to our, our area. The structure that they built, like I said, if you don't think balls of wood's strong, it is. They built their structure, and the structure weighed 38.5 grams. It held 868 pounds, and that was all within a time limit with doing their skit and so Now, when you look at all this other stuff, the props they had to build, they have to stay within a salary allotment of $150. So if you're looking at all the stuff that they built, they made it under $150. And so they're going to go up against China, they're going to go up against Germany, France. I can't name them all, but I will tell you, there's generally a lot of different countries. The last time my son and the girl from Helias went, that was when they were in fifth grade. They are all sophomores now. Each one of them brings a unique atmosphere to it. My son does engineering, that's what he wants to go into. He also builds the props. You'll see another guy in here, he does theatrics. He also actually wrote the skit. And then the girl, Faith, she does a lot of the art and the skit as well. So all them together have to use their creative skills, creative thinking. Me, as a manager, I can't say anything except for what is in the book, as what the manager can say. So really, it's a really neat opportunity for them. They've been working since October of this last year, nights, weekends, because really time does fly when they're doing all this stuff together. So what we're doing is, in order to go to this tournament, we have to raise funds to go to it, and it's really kind of a unique thing. We are branding Jeff City. We are the only team, besides one other team, in the engineering, this is an engineering platform that we are doing. And there's only one other team, high school team, from the state of Missouri, that's Carl Junction. So we are branding Jeff City, they're branding Carl Junction. As the only two members in the state of Missouri, we're the only team from Jefferson City, actually, going to the global competition. So we're just going out and about. We've sold candy bars, we've sold car washes, we're going to local businesses, and we just ask for your guys' support in this unique opportunity. You know, as my son said tonight, you don't ever know, because the competition's so fierce when you might get a chance to do again, but they're excited. So I just want to leave you guys with the knowledge that we're branding Jeff City, and we're going to take it to global competition.
Thank you, Les. And please keep us posted on how that goes and the progress.
Okay.
And you're very engaged in students and their success, and we appreciate that. And we have News Tribune here, maybe they can do a story, a follow-up, to get the word out about that potential. Councilman Graham?
I had the opportunity to see the video, and it is amazing what they do with that 800-plus pounds in that, in that small space that they have. It is amazing. So I would ask my colleagues to please get a chance to look at that amazing video. What's the date on the competition, again?
May 22nd. It's the last day of school. So right after school's out, we have to go up to Kansas City, we have to check in, and that's where we're going to be basically getting all our stuff unloaded. And it's, it's just going to be neat, because we're, we're going to be meeting kids from all over. There's 17, anticipated 17,000 kids from all over the world coming to this competition.
I know that you've been to the, some of the organizations here in town. I know the Lions Club, you've been there. And what is the goal that you're trying to reach as far as monetary goal for these students?
Sure. So the registration fee by itself is $5,500. That doesn't include the lodging nor the meals. Now, I will tell you, we've, we've been going everywhere, and we've done very well. We are just trying to make sure that these kids can do it. The hotel, you know, stay in and of itself for the families, we're taking that on, because we want to do that. But, you know, this past weekend, we were out at Hy-Vee selling the candy bars, and we've had a lot of help from businesses to donate items so that we can sell to make our goal.
Is it, can I ask you, what, how sure are you of reaching your goal?
Right now, we are at 2,000 short. We, and this is just in a week and a half, we've raised basically 3,500. We had to put 1,500 down, and we made that within the first three days. So, and then going around after, just seeking pledges, it's been awesome. We feel that we can make it. We just wanted to let you guys know that we are, we want to rep Jeff City, because-
Yeah, and I think it's awesome that you are representing Jefferson City, and I'm sure you're going to do us, do us proud. So I'm going to ask my colleagues on the council if they will be willing to make a donation, and if, so what do we send those donations, or how do we, what do we go to to make those donations?
If you want, what I can do is, I can, we have a GoFundMe page, and I don't actually have that right in front of me, but I can let you know, Councilman Graham, and if you want to pass that to everyone, and/or we have Venmo. Or if you wanted to contact me by my cell phone number, I can make arrangements to come by and let you know-
Okay.
-how you can do that, otherwise.
Final thing, I want to ask my colleagues to please join me in supporting our students from here in Jefferson City to represent us, so that's it.
Great. Thank you, Les. Appreciate it. Good luck.
Thanks.
All right. Now, back on item 16, we have Mr. Leonard Steinman signed up. Welcome.
Good evening. Leonard Steinman, 2217 West Edgewood. I would like to clarify one thing first, though. That is not the exchange bank, that is a farmer's exchange bank. My mother was a brick holder, her family was. So make sure it's the farmer's exchange bank, instead of just the exchange bank. There is two different aspects. I have a complaint. As a taxpayer and as a citizen of Jefferson, I drove for a trucking company for roughly four weeks before I realized what they were doing to our city. They have roughly 90 trucks running in and out of this town three times a day. They run a CNG, clean natural gas. They're not paying their share of the bills for the road upkeep, because they're not paying no road taxes, they're not paying no fuel taxes. The other factor is, they have 3,200 pounds of pressure on that, on that gas, and they got nothing but, but two vessels on the top side that are plastic fiberglass, and one vessel on the bottom side that is basically an aluminum diesel fuel tank with that much pressure in it. They can only run 2,000 pounds, because anything above 2,000 pounds, it, you have to have a CDL license for hazardous material, and you also have to have it placered on the tractor, not just a trailer. And they have brass fittings on there. I watched one in Jonesboro, Arkansas, three weeks ago, blow up. 30-foot hole deep, 70-foot around, spray out 400 feet. I've got pieces of the spray. That's when I decided to quit driving for this trucking company. As a chief of police and a chief of fire department, you need to investigate what's going on there, because some of them are basically sitting at a certain aspect in Jefferson City, and it's just sitting. All you got to do is go by there with a sledgehammer, hit it, hit it real hard, and that brass fitting comes off. Guess what? You got an explosion, a deep one, a very serious one. I appreciate the comments that you're going to have, and you can ask any comments you want, but I quit the company because of it. My profession, my true profession, is trucking, and this is not part of my profession. And I have done went to the lieutenant governor, I have done, written, written an article in the newspaper, and I, and I have done quit and told them why I quit. So let's, as the city of Jefferson, let's first stop this CNG, because it's nothing but a nasty gas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinman. Item 17, council and staff discussion on presentation topics. Item 18, any new business? Councilman Mahalovich?
Sorry for that. The CASA asked for passes for bus and parks. Do we have a method for JC Parks to have a fund that buys passes? How would a person allow these CASA folks to get on our buses or get on the parks? Do you have a-
Well, I am now a CASA volunteer myself, so I've been working with Mr. Lacure on scholarships for camps and stuff like that. So Alex and I are working together on those projects.
Okay. Very good, thanks. And thank you for-
As far as buses, we do offer a program where various agencies or folks can purchase passes in bulk, and so it's something similar Lincoln has done, and sharing the cost of those, so you can get in a contract with the city. I think the city manager approves those. And a lot of times, we encourage people to get their donors to contact us about that.
Okay, thanks.
Good point, Councilman Mahalovich. Is that something maybe that, that you could work with CASA and communicate that piece to them a little bit?
Yeah, certainly.
Or maybe talk with Aaron and get that? Okay, great, thank you. Any other discussion? Any new business? Any unfinished business? Motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, have a great evening. Thank you.[1746.91]